Good evening and welcome to the December 17th regularly scheduled school board meeting. So who's introducing our pledge?
Jeff.
Oh, Mr. Delangey, would you please introduce our pledges?
Leading the pledge today for our meeting today is Barrington Girl Scout Troop 12005. And all of the children are either part of BES or ECLC. They're also accompanied by their troop leaders. See if I can remember, Amy, Nicole, Laura, and Michelle. So they're gonna thank you guys for all coming. This is great. Get us started. But before we start with the pledge, I just want to mention a couple of notable achievements that the troop has had. So the troop recently performed an epic caroling concert at a senior center. And I heard it was pretty awesome, right? They've also participated in a Girl Scout campout, right? Hope it wasn't too cold of a night.
It was downpouring.
It was downpouring. Nice.
Perfect.
The heat was up too high.
Oh, God. But the best part is actually something that's coming up in the not-too-near future. Does anybody want to say what's coming up?
Cookie season.
That's the most wonderful time of the year.
That's my favorite part of Girl Scout program. Yep, and I can't wait to get my box of Thin Mints or...
Just the one?
I know, multiple boxes.
Multiple boxes.
Girls, take them. Mr. Delangey wants you to come over the S.A.U.
Yeah, so, yeah, order away.
Come on over.
Who knows how to say the pledge of allegiance? All right, so what we want you to do, come on up here. I'm gonna put the microphone in here. And then you're gonna start as loud as you can, your loudest voices. Right, that's when we tell you to go. All right, you ready? Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice. Those are the most enthusiastic guys I've ever seen.
You all did a great job.
Yeah.
But thank you all for coming. We have a little pledge thing for you, okay? And I hope you all keep it scouting. My son was a boy scout.
Yeah, she's been a girl scout.
Fun growth and activities and did some great things through scouting, so I know how awesome it can be. You guys get cookies, which is way better than popcorn. You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you all for coming and for all that you do and not that thing. I bet those folks appreciated it. You guys did a great job. One more, I'm sorry. No, you're all welcome to stay, but you're all welcome to scurry as well.
We're gonna go decorate cookies.
Oh, fun!
Sorry for you guys who have to stay for board meetings, but we're gonna go decorate cookies.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Come back to sell us some cookies though.
Merry Christmas, guys.
Come back. All right, so... Do we have a motion? Do we need anything changes to the agenda? All right, so anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes. My understanding is we have one...
Yeah, I think Dan had mentioned that he might have misspoke, that the town budget is gonna be up about 7%, of which they're attributing about 3% of that to the new library, so just...
That's in Section 11.
So unless there are any other changes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
How about non-public?
And non-public as well.
Second?
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Cole, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Recently at Dover, we just finished the fall sports season and we started the winter. So we had an assembly in the school and I believe there was two full team state championship titles. And there was individuals for golf. And then we had a few state runner-ups.
That's great.
Yeah, and then, um, is it like my personal experience too?
Sure.
So I just got a varsity state championship title.
Good, congratulations.
Thank you. And now I'm doing the winter season for cheer.
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are you looking forward to the vacation?
For states, the state championship.
For cheering?
Yes.
Are you looking forward to the upcoming vacation?
Oh, yes.
Anything exciting happening in school this week leading up to vacation?
Not really that much exciting that's going on right now. But after break, we come back and there's a reset day. So it's a day where we, the people go to school and it's just like no classes that day. And it's just like, we really briefly talked about it, so I don't know too much yet. But we go and it's like there's activities scheduled throughout the day. And we just go through the activities that you want to do. And it's just like a day to like reset between the semesters.
Wish they had that when I was on vacation.
Did I see they're putting off the new sports complex for a year at least? Is that what I read?
Yeah, I don't know exactly. I just knew there was a lot of talk about it. And a lot of the students were really trying to push it and stuff. But I did not see what they're actually doing with it.
Where do you come down as far as grass or artificial? That's a big scuttle, right?
Yeah, I think they really were trying to do artificial.
Anything else for Cole?
No.
All right, well, thanks for coming.
Merry Christmas, buddy. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. See you next year.
Enjoy your holidays.
Congratulations again.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming. Okay, so now we are at public comment. I just want to remind folks, per policy, B-E-D-H, to speak publicly. You need to be a resident of the town, okay? You'll need to give your name and address, or if you were representing a group. You're welcome to criticize or operations of the school or programs, but you cannot air any criticism of personnel or any person connected with the school system. And we're hoping that if you do choose to participate, you will comply with those rules. So as always, we'll start with our one member of the public here. And then if anyone online wants to... He has passed. If you're online and you would like to speak and you can comply with those expectations, we'd love to hear from you. I don't see any hands raised. There is, of course, another opportunity later in the meeting. Okay, go in once, go in twice. All right, moving on to the superintendent report.
All right, thank you. So we do have a few positions open, which I think across the state, that's sort of typical throughout school years right now. Speech assistant, again, is just a position that we're really hoping we can find because there's such, it's such a great support to our speech pathologists. So we'll keep it posted in hopes that that position is able to be filled at some point. Financial, as we know, everything is very school budget focused right now. After the final scrubbing of default and proposed, I am pretty excited to share actually that we were able to get them within 1.1% of each other. This was after a lot of time and energy by the school board, the administrative team, and also the advisory budget committee. So thank you, everybody, for all of that time and attention. It's definitely been a challenging budget process this year. So the current proposed budget is 7.7% up from this current operating budget. And the default budget is at a 6.59. So there's just under a $329,000 difference between the two. And I will take some time at the upcoming budget hearing to discuss why the default budget is up so much. Just for now, big picture, it's health insurance costs, it's increased number of high schoolers, high school tuition costs, and some salary increases that are in current collective bargaining agreements. Additionally, I'll spend some time at that meeting talking about a potential future BES expansion. We have realized, I want to say this properly, not 60 additional net students enrollment-wise, but 60 students who are living in more newly-built properties. One of the monthly meetings that Connor McGyver and I had, I asked him to give us the names of streets from the time that the complex across from the middle school went in until present because really that's when we started having rental property and additional, you know, building in town that was above and beyond, that was a custodian, above and beyond what we have seen for years. It's been pretty stable. So right now, that's at a 60 additional students from those additional streets. So we will keep very close tabs on that so that we can be as proactive as possible if we need an addition at some point. We've had a few committee meetings recently. Policy committee was slated to meet this week. However, we're going to postpone that into January. People are incredibly busy this time of the year. So we do have a couple of policies later in the meeting for second read. But we're just trying to finish tying up policies relative to transportation that will go out in an RFP in January. And in addition to that, when the wellness committee met, you know, you have a group of very dedicated people concerned about not only the physical activity levels, but also, you know, food and drink and just how we're modeling and supporting our students in that area. So they asked for our wellness policy to go back to policy committee. And we had a little subgroup to dive in just to that one policy because it's pretty layered. There's a lot of federal requirements and regulations that we have to abide by. So that subcommittee met and we will jump back into that at the next policy committee meeting in January. We've also made sure we looked at sort of our area districts and what they're doing. When they changed the rules several years ago now around, you know, not giving kids food as incentives or rewards to just, you know, give little gifts or actually verbal praise as opposed to feeding them. I think a lot of districts went pretty extreme on, you know, restricting. And we know that's not a great healthy way to approach eating either is to restrict. So we're trying to find a middle ground of supporting good, healthy physical activity and food choices. I do have on tonight's agenda both high school contracts, so that was great. And Oyster River did add a statement for us around any substantial change in instructional delivery so that we would be afforded the opportunity for a meeting with them to discuss those changes if they were to happen. And we have, that one's not signed by the Oyster River Board yet, but I know it's gone to their board a couple of times. We do have, as of hot off the presses this morning, Dover's signed. So we'll jump into those later in the meeting. We do have one more meeting with the teachers' union to continue to work through the negotiation process. So we will update folks as that continues to unfold. And like I already mentioned, I did have my regular monthly meeting with Connor. And then we also just met as a collaborative committee. We sort of missed November somehow. It never got in the books. And we just did just meet, the majority of that discussion centered around everybody's budgets, of course. You know, where the town was, where we were, and also how to be consistent with what will be new for us this year, a voter guide. And the town has for quite a number of years done a voter guide. So we're going to use the same color coding and the same format so that the community is looking at the same thing and not, you know, two different documents. So I will pull that together after the budget hearing, knowing that it won't go anywhere out into the public until after deliberative because things could always change. So we'll have it drafted and ready because there's a tiny turnaround for when you want to get it in people's hands prior to the March vote, but after your deliberative session. So that is coming. Some additional updates. At the last meeting, we did talk about some ongoing behavioral concerns across the district, more specifically younger learners at the ECLC. Not unique to Barrington, you know, all of my colleagues that I speak with and student service directors were just seeing an increase in the, primarily the K-2 population around school readiness, ability to manage feelings, behaviors, attend task, et cetera. So as a result of that concern, the district will be convening a task force to look at some programmatic solutions to this elevated need. We are anticipating creating that, defining the purpose, and what we hope to resolve out of that concern following the deliberative budget session. So stay tuned for more information on that. I did spend the last couple of days handing out the holiday calendars. You also have those in front of you. We kind of joke about them because not a lot of people use calendars anymore. But every time I say I might get rid of them, people are like, "No, I love it." Nice little tradition that we have continued to do. So handed those out over the last couple of days. And one other additional update, which I think people will be wonderfully excited about, is Katie did attend that follow-up when we talked about the van a couple of meetings ago. That there was a luncheon learn through the New Hampshire Association of Special Education Administrators. And here's the drum roll, we can use the van. There are some caveats with that. So there's only one thing that we have used it for sporadically in the past that we will no longer be able to use it for. But so the rules around it are, it has to be district-owned, which it is. It can only be driven by district employees for student programming. So what we have done occasionally, we can't do any longer, is use it for home-to-school or school-to-home transportation. So we have, and it's been, I mean, probably a half a dozen times over multiple years where a situation has happened where a student has missed the bus or they haven't, whatever, a variety of reasons where we have with two staff members done that home-to-school transport upon occasion. So I think that's a huge win and a celebration as far as our...
I agree.
Yeah.
But we probably can't use it when we're taking middle schoolers down to play at the elementary. That's not programming.
I clarified that. I asked that specific question today. And we can, as long as it's for anything program-based, which would be our music schools. And then any of our life skills programs can use the van as well as long as they've gone through the DOE vetting process, which all of our educators have, so.
And if a coach is getting a stipend, that means their employee, correct?
Correct.
Awesome.
Yeah, so that's exciting news. That is great.
And the, just one question, going to the task force. Interesting insertion of the word "programmatic." What is, what, why just "program"?
Well, so when you're looking at, you know, student need, you want to develop a process, a procedure, a program to support them. So, you know, you set goals for the program, set direct teaching opportunities, you know, what are the lagging skills? How are we gonna get them the skills that they need in order to be the productive little student citizens we need them to be? So not suggesting necessarily that we would create a whole new program.
That's what I was concerned about. Thank you.
We do already have two behavioral programs in district. And we can certainly take some, you know, good lessons learned and good information from those programs in order to, you know, really look at, you know, what are our, what are our littlest learners' need? And why are we struggling and why are they struggling so much right now?
I won't say much about this, but this task force is a great idea. So thank you very much for following through with that. But I, I think that more than anything, we gotta look at not just programmatic, but just solutions in general. I think that, the idea being that there's obviously disruptions happening to the delivery of education at a lot of levels in our schools and looking at whatever it takes to... I'm wondering if the task force should look at, and I don't want to get too much into this because this is a topic for another night. But that said, look at how to eliminate disruptions to the delivery of education, not necessarily solve the underrooting behavioral issues of every single kid because that could be beyond our mandate, right?
Yep.
So, okay, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, anything else for Deanna?
I know, it's exciting. So I think you probably don't all want to hear the backstory on this again. I'll be brief. We are required to be in compliance with our students who go to high school who then go to career technical centers. So our calendars have to, cannot have more than a 10-day variance across the entire school year. I will say the area superintendents have it down cold now. Usually it takes us multiple meetings. It was one fairly brief meeting this year because we just sort of come to some agreements and ground rules around starting points. So that was fabulous. And I also, so we are in compliance with this calendar with our kiddos who go to our three high schools and the CTE programs. And I did also already bring this to the union per our CBA agreement. And they gave it the AOK as well.
Looking for a motion to accept?
Is there an election? What's the elections? All right, I'll second it.
Any discussion about the calendar? All those in favor?
Aye.
So I'm gonna go on a little bit of a limb here. I'm not a lover of remote learning. I think it, it does propose a lot of issues. I think there are some pros for sure. Some concerns that I have are back from my director's student service days around just the challenges of getting all of the specialized program to students. Additionally, in the past, we've been running a shortened day for remote learning. And you are required at this point to have a full school day if you're going to do remote learning. So that would be, we'd have to look at the minutes that we currently have. It's about six and a quarter hours of a direct instruction. You essentially have to follow your regular school day. So what happens a lot of times is parents and service providers, just to give a few examples, say, speech delivery will be like, you know, "I really just don't feel like either the related service provider or the family." Like, "No, I'm not, I don't want to give permission to have it happen remotely." You then need to make it up the next week. And I don't think I need to tell you all they don't have a lot of extra space in their schedule to be making up sessions. So that gets pretty challenging to comply with those. Also, we've had enough new staff members that weren't here with us over COVID that they don't have that knowledge at the ready to be building a Google Classroom and such to be able to pull that off more readily. So we, of course, will do what we need to do. And I know there's a concern around camps and, you know, the end of the school year and such. Right now, I feel like we have a comfortable five days before we get near anything that's atypical for an end-of-school closing. Last year, I had brought some information forward. Vicky and I looked at the last 10 years and when is the typical closing of school? And with the exception of the COVID year where everybody was done early, we are typically done between the 21st and the 24th of June. So right now, we have five days before we would even, you know, near that date. And, you know, before we start seeing snow regularly, I just figured it was time to bring that forward again and make that decision so that if teachers need to be prepared, they have the time to do that. You know, it's, it's hard when you don't know really about a weather day until the day before. And if you want a real-time instruction, you know, the upper grades can manage pretty readily. Far more challenging for preschool through probably like third, fourth grade to be doing that type of preparation within 24, 48 hours. So just looking to the board since calendar is your purview as to your thoughts.
So if, if I heard you correct, you won't use remote learning until after them five days are used up?
No.
I would, I would honestly like to not use it at all. We only used one day last year, an abridged shortened day. And, you know, there, this is one of those things, just like a snow call. There's opinions on either side. I don't know that there's a true right or wrong here. You know, I just feel that in-person instruction with our teachers is a much higher quality instruction.
I'm not personally in favor of remote learning for that reason. Is that, you know, some kids will get, and it depends on, on the staff, but some kids will get good, a fair amount of stuff and some kids won't. And so, you know, we're in, we're in school for 80 days, right?
178.
178. So, you know, I'm of the opinion that they, I'm sorry. I'm of the opinion they should be in, in school for that learning. I don't, I don't support remote learning.
And just to add while people are thinking, we have 178-day calendar instead of the 180. So legally, you can either have 180 days of instruction or you can comply with the number of hours. Even with our 178, we are still comfortably above the required hours. I know it gets challenging when, you know, it's a Monday and you're trying to bring kiddos back into school. You know, how valuable is that instruction at that point on the middle of June? So we do have some flexibility there with, with instructional time.
I think we're all hoping for a mild winter, as we do every winter.
Right.
That said, you know, I, I still believe that, that a remote learning day should be in the toolbox. You know, I don't prefer it. I definitely know that in-person education is far superior to online education. But that said, if you did come up against those five days, it would be nice to say... Because I think parents in general would say, "Well, we're now getting into the end of June. Like, we're, you know, we've now missed seven, eight, nine days." You know, it'd be nice to have some of those days be, even though they're not as meaningful as an in-person day, to say, "It's a remote day. We have to do it," you know, one or two of them. And I'd like to see us be prepared to unleash that if need be. That's all. We've, you guys have demonstrated it can be done, right?
Absolutely.
And, you know, none of the staff was really, knew how to do it back at the start of COVID, but they figured it out pretty damn quick, right? So some of these staff that's come over that are new, you know, I don't know.
I agree. And we did, we did, I mean, it feels like it was both six months ago and also 20 years ago that we were dealing with, the discussion of regular remote learning. And we did do a really, really fabulous job. I just worry about that when we did that, it was longer term and the students were able to acclimate to it and for just one day, possibly one or two days. I don't know the value necessarily that they would get. And I've seen firsthand them trying to charge 140-something laptops on a few carts and making sure they have all their plans together. And I think sometimes it's nice to just say, you know, that's, we're just cutting that cord and just saying that we're gonna focus on in-person instruction. So I would be comfortable with, as Rick was saying, just, just keeping it to, to in-person instruction and not relying on the remote learning. Especially also because I feel like there's some concern about equity with the, any special ed services. So it's very difficult to just do basic remote learning, but then also the special ed services, it's almost impossible.
Yeah, they, I think, again, we're gonna have opinions on both sides. You know, some families are for it, some feel like I then still have to be off because my kiddos and, you know, young and they... and, you know, young and they, they have a hard time accessing it on their computer on their own, so it's a tough one.
I want to put you guys on the spot, but do you mind if I just clarify? So you, so if you go past those five days, you're in favor of staying in-person only even if we're going into the last couple of days and before July?
That's what I am.
Okay.
I would say it would depend on where it like lies in the week, I mean, we've lived in, well, most people, we know it's winter, we know it's coming, but not last year, but the year before, we pardoned, was it a day or two days? Because it was like we came back on a Monday and we were like, okay, that's ridiculous, so.
I can certainly get the exact number of hours and how many days sort of flex time that we have, just so we'll know that going in. I used to know it off the top of my head, but we did extend the day, so I, and of course, middle school has a higher requirement.
Quick, well, wait, you have to click it later right now.
Recession, elementary.
Yeah, exactly, all right.
We, when I was a kid, we ran out of days and we ended up going to school on Saturdays for a couple of.
But you're not suggesting that.
Yes, he is, I heard that.
My name's God, so I'm suggesting that.
We've had years too where we've, you know, given up the May PD day to offset a day and have been creative, so.
It can, it can be a tool in the toolbox, but when, you know, like back, I think you did similar to like Oyster River, if it's snowing out, but the kids enjoy the snow, if it's windy, rainy, icy, that could be a remote day, but we all know the past two winters, what has happened with those days, we haven't had power, so, so we've tended, I think, to do the crunching of the numbers on the hours.
Yep.
So it's good to have as a tool, but I don't think it's one we'll probably use a whole heck of a lot.
I also think that if we get close to them five days, it's within your purview as a superintendent to come back to this board and say, hey, we've used up these five days, would you consider remote learning at that point?
I just don't want the staff to have to, I mean, it's a lot, it's, I know it just sounds like it's one day, but it is a lot of work to have that in your back pocket last minute to, you know what I mean, I just think if it's really just one day, I don't see the value of the.
No, and I completely agree with you, Carrie, like that's, I've heard from a lot of folks that it's a lot of work to have, to have, to keep that tool at the ready in the toolbox, but that said, I also know that those days at the end of June, when the kids are, it's now, you know, 80-some degrees in the building and you're trying to keep them focused, those are not exactly meaningful learning days, like, and I think that throwing them in front of, you know, a few computer lessons to, in the middle of a snowstorm in January might look appealing to a lot of families if they knew they're going to get out on time, so.
Hence why we got to get air conditioning in these buildings.
Yeah, air conditioning, yeah. Right here, Garth supports air conditioning, yeah?
Actually, I'm getting there, to be honest with you, yeah, for sure.
It's so hot, I know, it gets so hot.
It's not, yeah, it's getting there, the climate, you know.
But that's for another day, sorry.
That's for another budget.
Sorry, sorry.
Another budget.
Yeah, another budget, promise.
That's for some grant funding.
So I do think, you know, I think what I'm hearing from the board is that we support that that is not going to be our go-to to start. If we start accruing a lot of days, we may come back and visit and let staff know to prepare for that, but parents should be aware that that is probably not going to be an option to start. I would agree there are equity issues because not just for special education students, but for other students who won't have access to, to adult support that can support them, won't have access to the technology.
Wanting power.
And as Jason said, plenty of us might not have access to power, so for a host of reasons, you know, but I, I, I don't want to say, no, we're never going to do remote because, you know, so, but for at least, and I've always, as you know, articulated and maintained, there's magic in snow days, I think it should have them.
You are, you are always very, very nostalgic about snow days. You must have had great snow days when you were.
There was a lot of snow. These winters are nothing.
Let it be known, Maura Taylor builds a mean snowman.
So, so I will obviously keep close contact on it, I'm the one that gets up and makes the calls and then if we are getting into, you know, I do think that when you get into that very last week of June, for again, a variety of reasons, it's, it becomes a little challenging.
And again, no one is advocating that remote learning is the, the way to go. What we're saying, so what is the, what is, what is the bare minimum counts, right? Like, do you have to send them home with a laptop? Can you send them home with a, with a grade appropriate workbook for the day and they have to complete a number of lessons? I'm just saying that, listen, I know that's not a meaningful learning day, but if that counts against a day at the, on July, on June 29th, I might say, a lot of folks might say, let's make that trade.
So there's difference between Blizzard bags and remote learning.
And so the challenge with those Blizzard bags is, is that then that work has to get turned in and we have to have a certain, same with remote day, you have to have a certain percentage that participates, like 75%, right? Or it doesn't count as a day, even if 74% of kids logged in and turned in, so, so, you know, so our options are slightly open, but we're leaning towards traditional snow days. How's that sound?
That sounds fabulous.
Yeah.
And I think that's actually a really good point about participation because it would be wildly frustrating, I think, for the 70, let's say 70, we had 70% one day, right? And for the students and the families who made it happen, and if we didn't have participation, then that day.
Well, and that's a challenge for our staff too, because if they've participated, a day doesn't count, then there's a cost incurring of having another day.
Right, how many, how many times have we gone remote for snow, do you know?
Last year, we only did one.
Just one last year, but in, in the recent few years, half a dozen times, something like that, maybe?
Oh, not even.
Not even? How many times have we, 75% not participated?
Oh gosh, I'd have to go and actually look at that, so.
Has it ever happened?
That they didn't, it didn't count as a day?
Never happened.
No, well, and it, it's that there's variability though because we've done this shorter schedule, so it's hard to speak to that with knowing that you're now looking at a full school day. But you, you can do a mix of synchronous and asynchronous, you know, you can jump on, you can do a mini lesson and say, hey, for the next 20 remaining minutes of the period, my expectation is XYZ, and then the teacher would collect that work, you know, at the next class period. So there are some options there, but we will lean toward good old-fashioned in-person instruction and if for some reason I feel like we're getting down to the wire and we need to revisit it, then we'll bring it back.
Sounds good. All right, so new after-school club stipends.
Yes, so.
Dungeons and Dragons, yes.
Yeah.
I didn't see that, I looked at this, I didn't see that before.
So this is an area, the stipend committee has been meeting pretty regularly, working really hard over the past year and a half, two years to make some changes and really open up the availability and opportunity. I think when the group was first created, it was viewed, it was as it was middle school only and just for sports, right? So that is absolutely not the case and we have a pretty, it's getting built back up now that we're post-COVID. I can't believe we're saying COVID so many times in a meeting in 2024, but anyway, we are starting to get that participation back up and that desire for staff as well as students to do some of those after-school activities. So we are, per the stipend agreement, every time we propose new ones, the first, the stipend committee meets and says, okay, you know, how many students is this going to serve? How many, what, what's the grade level span?
There's a rubric, right, for, or something like a rubric that shows like.
So that's part of the work we're doing right now is getting a more formalized process in place so that staff are aware that, hey, you can put a proposal forward and here's how you go about doing that. So we've created a, a club proposal Google survey, so they now have a means to do that, but also really trying to further define what the description is, almost like a, like in the past, our stipend agreements have basically just said, I'm doing such and such a club and I'm getting this amount of money, right? Pretty bland. And there's been an interest from staff and administration to just really expand on that, describe what the club or the activity is and then take it further. How many times are you meeting, what's the time, you know, for how long, the time commitment? And then we started adding language in there and the same thing with academic curriculum committee work, you know, if you, if we expect you to be there 10 times for $500, but you need to cancel, you know, we have a line in there that says your stipend amount may be decreased because it's really not fair for the person sitting across the table from you to attend all 10 sessions and get the same amount of money if you weren't able to be there. And there's a zillion valid reasons why people can't attend a meeting. So we're doing that with all of the stipended positions right now, whether it's a club or a sports team, so that there's an expectation there of how often you're going to meet and what the, that way we can more equitably determine how much money is being put forth on all of these groups. So the stipend committee met and we got two new proposals, we were super excited because we haven't had new proposals in a while and we looked at how often they were going to meet and what the, you know, sort of compared them to some other groups that were already there and landed on these amounts to pay those folks. And because we have some clubs that haven't run for a while, we have the, the money, the space to have some new things happen. So it's within budget and they've already been meeting, so they've already established that kiddos are interested in attending and just looking to approve those clubs.
How many kids are in each, do you know?
I do not know off the top of my head, I know that the proposals, the yarn and arts was kind of pretty open, but you can't be one person to a whole bunch of kids and Dungeons and Dragons, I think was 12 to 15, I can look, but I can let you know.
Just guessing.
Yeah, usually it's 12 to 15 kids per an adult because you, you know, you want to be able to monitor them appropriately.
Yeah, so you need us to vote on that.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve yarn arts and Dungeons and Dragons.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm glad that we're bringing in the fun, like the fun, the fun back, the fun stuff.
And I know BES is starting to have some conversation and looking at the enrichment that they used to do after school way back when, so it's just a matter of, you know, finding somebody to coordinate it and, you know, they've never been on our typical stipend list.
Those were usually very short.
Yes, a few weeks.
It was like, yeah.
And a lot of elementary schools do that, it's more parent-driven and the cost is really just dependent on what the materials of the activity cost, so.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A little like 20 sided.
All right. You are up.
Here we go.
I like, I like the enthusiasm, thank you. I, I hope, Garth said he was going to mention it, I misspoke or something.
I'll fix.
Yeah, it's about three and a half percent is what the library is going to add in.
So Anne Marie, did you hear that, it's three and a half percent?
I just heard that right now.
Yeah, we said three.
Well, we, we corrected it to three.
Telephone game.
Okay, three, three and a half, something like that. Okay, I just wanted you to know I'm reading your notes too, that's a good sign.
Be my eight pages of minutes.
Yeah, it was fun, it was very exciting, thank you.
There's no detail.
I appreciate it. I, I always look for my name, is what. This is a comment, someone mentioned that all these new teachers hadn't, hadn't had the chance to get into.
The chance?
Into, into remote learning, but it occurred to me that many, or maybe some of those new teachers actually experienced remote learning, so they have a very different perspective on, but that's separate, sorry, I go, I go afield. We did pass, we did decide, finalize the budget, it'll be presented at our budget hearing, which is going to be the 6th of January, I think yours is the 2nd, isn't it?
7th.
7th, okay, the day after, so.
Wait, how is that possible? Aren't they both, were they supposed to be Saturday?
Did you say deliberative or hearing?
No, public hearing.
Hearing. Oh, okay. You responded to six and I was choosing the seventh.
Oh, yeah, deliberative session's February 8th.
Yeah, that's different than deliberative.
Yeah, the hearing is on Tuesday, the 7th.
Okay, yeah, so I, I think this applies to everyone, you can decrease that budget, but you can't increase it. You can a deliberative session, but not at these budget hearings, so we'll be doing it on Monday, the 6th. I assume you reported about this Google Board, Select Board meeting, which went on, which is good, thank you very much and have a good Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Dan.
God, you should take notes from Anne Marie on how to do minutes because hers are far more detailed than.
Hers are awesome.
No, non-public, it doesn't have to be. Non-public doesn't have to be.
Garth, Garth does a great job.
I came to your defense.
Look at, you tell a woman she makes a good snowman, look at that.
Jeff, take it away, please. Before, can I jump in before Jeff starts? I just, when Dan was talking about his correction, it brought my attention to this bright pink sticky note that didn't get my attention when I was doing my report. The last meeting you had asked about the tax impact on the budget, so proposed would be a dollar and 24 cents on the thousand and default is a dollar six.
Easy, nothing to do, but it's just, it's crazy.
So the library.
That's ours, not the library's.
All right, Jeff, please now take us away.
All right, thank you.
Give us good news.
After that, after that joyful.
People.
Joyful news, yeah.
People.
All right, so just for the record, I just wanted to do a quick update on the key priorities of the five-year technology plan and then just give a brief update of where we're at on those things. So the, the Barrington School District five-year plan for technology, and I themed it building capacity, it just focuses on enhancing classroom learning environments, ensuring compliance, and positioning the district for future innovation and growth. So the, the key priorities in the five-year plan, the first is improving overall operational efficiencies, increasing resources for technology integration inside the classrooms, strengthening data privacy and security, and expanding opportunities for coding and computer science, and increasing professional learning. So the other key, key priority, priority area for technology is the district's data governance plan and that's in order to comply with the New Hampshire Student and Staff Data Privacy laws. So this year, what we're do, we're focusing on upgrading classrooms with interactive overhead projectors. We're also rolling out teacher Chromebooks to replace MacBooks. We're implementing systems for streamlining hiring and, as well as teacher evaluations, and we're improving our website for ADA compliance. The focus this year specifically in data governance is developing an information classification and handling guide and we're expanding multi-factor authentication for district administrators. So that is just for the record, the overview of where we're headed with technology. There's a couple of district-wide security and operational efficiency projects that are, they're not explicitly spelled, spelled out in our second-year plan, action items, and those include security camera upgrades, Power School applicant tracking software, and of course, our website cleanup and ADA compliance. So as we probably know, we've added a significant amount of security cameras and, across the district over the summer in order to make that sys network more secure and increase the performance, we actually split the fiber connections that connect all the buildings and double the capacity. So where we're at, the last connection was between the SAU and the elementary school and that has just been completed, so we're just awaiting some camera vendor equipment to be put in place and we'll have all of the buildings upgraded. Power School applicant tracking that we started with the data setup and the configuration and testing process and we've had several meetings and several more planned to streamline the hiring process and it just basically is going to provide us with a centralized platform for posting job, posting jobs and applicant tracking and onboarding, so. Regarding the website cleanup and ADA compliance, Bridgette and I have been working, removing a bunch of outdated content, unused navigation menus, we've upgraded a lot of the page designs so that they're mobile responsive now and also complying to the ADA, which is the American for Disabilities Act, text contrast compliance, so there's actually, there's actually a specification for what your colors and text should look like, so. And I'm also, I've added a five-year plan dashboard, there's a link there and I'm, over time, continuing to add elements to that. So the goal there is to have an outline of the district five-year plan and then be able to drill down and visually see where we're at with, with any of the action. with, with any of the action items that we have there, so. So progress toward the district goals for technology. So our, one of the, one of the technology action is action number six, if you look at the plan. It includes staffing enhancements. And during the budget process, I proposed a full-time learning systems administrator and a technology integrator. We understand that can't happen for next year, but what we're doing is we're continuing to transfer systems administration tasks to the staff member who was a part-time technology integrator, who is now a full-time technology integrator slash system administrator. So we're continuing to add function to that position. And that, we are able to do that because the middle school hired a computer teacher to take over the role of that previous person. So this same person is also providing more technology integration support in classrooms and professional development so that we can increase and build that capacity for staff just on the, for knowledge of systems that we just use every day. Because there, we have a lot in place, but I think the professional development can go a lot further for that technology. So if I move to action number seven, they include infrastructure improvements. So I've, I've started the process of upgrading the first six classrooms with interactive projectors at the middle school and will be at the elementary school. So that's part of the nine-year refresh cycle that we approved through last year's budget. We're also continuing to roll out teacher Chromebooks and I've deployed about 30 of them so far. And I'm actually getting pretty good feedback from, from those. And, and I'm basically standardizing on one Chromebook model. It's called a Chromebook Plus, which gives, it's, it's a more adult version of a computer. And it just gives teachers more access to education-based tools that are already built into the Chromebook. Also, part of that, action seven, are software enhancements. Recently, we've discovered or found out that the New Hampshire Department of Ed is providing a free software called Data Studio for five years. So we want to take advantage of that. I've been to a few of the webinar or seminars for that. It looks like it can actually replace a product that we pay for called Performance Matters. And again, that would become part of a, the basis of a data dashboard if we, once we want to start creating that data dashboard for assessment demographics. Another software enhancement, we've, we've piloted and actually implemented the Power School Perform system, which, and where it's in use for teacher evaluations now. The Pickup Patrol, which is a software that we use for dismissals and so parents can log into it and put in when their children are going to be out or, you know, planned out, out. That system, I've integrated it completely into Power School. So that's going to save the school secretaries a lot of work updating rosters every year. So that's a step forward. So we've also completed the enhancement of Power School enrollment forms. So this update is make, is going to make it easier for families to update contact information, you know, get medical forms correct and other kinds of documents that we need for registration, which in the past, they would have had to done as a manual paper process, so. And then the last action is data governance. So we've, I've created a software approval and procurement flow chart that's going to guide our procurement process when we want to use any system that a child has to log into. So we want to make sure all of those systems are compliant with the New Hampshire data privacy laws. Basically, where a process didn't exist before, now we'll have a flow chart and a vetting process to make sure that they're all compliant. Information, classification, and handling. That's one of the requirements for data governance through the DOE. Well, not the DOE, but the New Hampshire's data privacy laws. That basically, what it does is it, it's a guide that categorizes everything that the district creates as, and we're using open, internal use and confidential. So basically, we want to be able to identify personally identifiable information that's coming or going within our district and be able to recognize when we're sending out that kind of information. So a class, a data handling classification guide helps you do that, so.
Is there any automation to that?
Yes, so that will be integrated like into Google Mail and Docs. So when things are created, we'll be able to stamp them.
That's great, that's great.
With a classification. But then finally, we're just, I started rolling out a multi-factor authentication for all district administrators, but ultimately, I'd like to do that across the board. And for that, what that is, is just a second way of authenticating who you are when you log into something. You probably use that for your bank accounts and such. You get a text or, you know. So what, what I'd like to do is use a single sign-on system that we use. We use one called Clever. And it actually has little badges that you can create to use as a, as a second factor authentication, so. So that's, there we are. Those are our updates, technology. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Jeff? Thank you, Jeff.
All right, let's move on.
Thanks for all the work on the dashboard. That's awesome.
Yeah, we're, we're getting there.
That's, it's going to crank, that's fantastic.
Have you checked out the website lately?
It looks really different.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Dover High School Tuition Contract?
So the one you have in your pocket, none of the verbiage has changed. It's just, it's a draft at the time because it needed to go back to the Dover Board. So I have two clean copies here, one of Dover and one of Oyster River. So no changes to Dover and Oyster River one. Actually, it made it into your, into the packet. I just printed one that, for signature that on the bottom of page. Sorry, I'm combining the two agenda items together. The bottom of the Oyster River Agreement, the very last sentence that starts with the Barrington and then goes on to page two is that additional added statement. So it says, "The Barrington School Board and Superintendent will be notified and offered a joint meeting to discuss any planned long-term disruption to the delivery of teaching and learning."
Did you know the torture to be added to that?
Well, if the whole board's being.
Oh, I, I didn't hear the whole board part, sorry. Just before we go, so I don't forget, can we add to the agenda that, the reports? Because remember, we did that the first time we started using these awesome templates? That they were, like you listed the reports that were in the packet, but not?
Yes, absolutely.
That they were just reports, just because.
I was actually going to just verbally say it, but that's great to have those on the agenda. So I will indicate who is in person speaking and whose reports can be found online. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you for that. Okay.
So it was the, it was the week of SAU reporting.
Yes.
Those are the ones that are included in the packet for people to reference.
Do we need to do them separately? Do we?
Yeah, we definitely. There'll be two separate warrants on.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. And we, and we did adjust the dates as well based on that 10-year plan that I had provided to not have competing big financial factors in time-intensive committees all in the same year.
God, you'll be here in nine years for one more of these, right?
God willing, Rick, God willing.
Are there any questions, comments about either, about the Dover contract?
Nope.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the Dover High School Tuition Contract.
In a second.
I will send you just the signature page since.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, how about a question or comments about the Oyster River contract?
I'm making a motion to accept the Oyster River contract.
What's the, sorry, Rick, what's the, what, where's the language of the?
At the very bottom of page one, it reads, and then on to two.
The Barrington School Board Superintendent offered a joint meeting to discuss any planned long-term disruption or disruption to the delivery of teaching and learning.
Long-term disruption.
We had a tough time with wording because.
Disruption had changed, right? The idea was not just something like COVID, but it was also like if they decided to add another sending school, sending school district.
Yeah, that verbiage is already in here.
That's already in there.
Around cost. And then we won't be charged a rate that's different than anybody else and have an, yeah.
But there was also the idea that if all of a sudden they said, you piece, we want to add another couple towns and our class size is going to balloon from 15 to 22, we should have, we're, we're buying a certain product, right?
Right.
And if they decide to change that product mid-contract, we should have a right to renegotiate or bow out.
Yep, well, we already have that, right? We have a four-year bailout anyway.
I think the idea is we don't want to, it's not like we want to leave, right? It's like we want to discuss with them before they jump off a bridge with something. Like, look, like it's that, you're changing what you're selling us. And like, think about this, you might lose it, you know?
They would have a considerable number of their own policies that they would have to change to significantly make a change that would impact us as well, like class size and course offerings and things like that. So it would be a big impact on their end before it even impacted us. So when we were trying to come up with wording that would sort of satisfy the, the thoughts, feelings on either side, you know, it's, it's challenging when you're the receiving district to just open up and say, sure, you know, for whatever issue you have, we're going to be at the ready to discuss it. So, you know, they, they had an interest in trying to honor that request, but also not expose everything.
Totally, but I think they'd also understand that if, like, six, seven years ago, six years from now, all of a sudden, the landscape has changed and they're facing, look, we better do something or else, you know, our population is falling much farther than we thought it had, or enrollment is down and we all of a sudden want to attract two or three other schools, districts. You know, but we should talk, we should at least think that they should say, maybe we should talk to Barrington first before we proceed. And then we could, whoever's on that board, Rick and his friends, nine years from now, could, you know, maybe talk them off a bridge or say, okay, we get that, but, I don't know.
Yeah, well, and I think.
Am I alone on this or?
They were pretty, you know, their, their interest is obviously in keeping us and also they adore our students and families and have pretty aggressively opened up the number of students that they're willing to accept, you know, in, in the building, so.
Well, yeah, well, they need us, right? Like, let's not be, okay, right?
It's not all benevolence, but no, yeah, you're right.
Boy, they, yeah, they like, they like the checks we're sending. And, and because it allows them to retain the programming.
Sure.
The exceptional program, mind you, that they provide. So if we're going to have language like this inserted into a contract, probably right now might be the time that that is inserted because now is when they need us more than usual.
And to actually add to your point, is the, am I overthinking that? The way that this is written is that we could only technically ask for that joint meeting if they initiate, like if Oyster River initiates contacting us? And I'm sure that they would, and I know it's in good faith, but there might be something that we hear because we're all small communities and like, would this restrict us from being able to initiate that conversation?
Well, we also have the ability to have a joint meeting with them in the contract anyway.
Oh, it is, okay. Where, where is that?
Separate from that, because we, we meet with them each year. Like, we're going to this year.
To meet at least once, so.
Yeah. Oh, and the language is at least.
And other such times as the parties shall agree so that they may benefit from the suggestions and recommendations of the Barrington School Board on curriculum, financial matters, and policies of Oyster River High School.
Oh, great, okay.
So because that language was already in there, they felt as though the bases were covered.
Yeah, yeah, I get it.
And again, it's really a moot point, I guess, because, you know, as, you know, the good doctor said to me last year, if you want to have a word with the move to Durham, right? So I get it, like, you know, but at the same time, it's like, you know, I'm just trying to avoid being an adversary relationship like I was during COVID, right? And it's more like, and I don't want it to be like, hey, a board that isn't in love with Oyster River as much as perhaps this board is says, you know, we, we want out, let's break the contract and we'll start the four-year bailout. Well, I'm not sure that's in the best interest of, of either town, right? Or, and any of our kids.
I did explain the landscape and the why behind it. And then to your point, it all depends on who fills the seats, right? Like, who holds the history and it's, you know, you don't, you don't know who's going to be there at the time to receive that information.
No, we need a, we need a.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Second the motion.
Of course you will.
There's a wall there, no one was.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, policies for second read. Purchasing and student transportation.
No changes since the last meeting, so they are simply second reads. The transportation is one that had gone back to policy, uh, policy committee and come back additionally.
All right. I make a motion to approve the following policies for second read, DJ and JICC.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
I need to come back and sign.
Come back.
All right, so we are back to our next public comment. Again, same rules apply, nothing's changed between earlier and now. Anybody in person? Okay. Oz is scrolling, I don't see any hands raised. All right, going once. Going once, all right. Thank you, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
You do a non-public?
Yeah, but then you, then you have to do it on her.
I thought you did that.
I make a motion to turn down public citing RSA 91-A3 comma 2C.
We had to vote on the adjournment first.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Cart for full horse.
I'm hungry.
Okay, so all those in favor are adjourning?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so now?
My motion to adjourn to a non-public citing RSA 91-A3 comma 2C.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor by roll call?
Jason Baker, aye.
Garth Svensson, aye.
Mortar Taylor, aye.
Carrie Neal, aye.
Rick Walker, aye.
All right, thank you all for coming. Thank you all for listening in. For staff online, we all certainly hope. See you next year. A relaxing and restful vacation and that you survive the next three days.